Are you ready to get started?
I'm ready.
Morning. Question, I'm going to follow the meeting to order.
Scott Vander.
Sarah.
Sarah Campbell.
Here.
John Allen.
President.
Frank Van Ash.
Here.
Betsy Harding.
Here.
Dick Bennett.
Yes.
George Howard.
Here.
Larry Seaver.
He contacted me and said it couldn't happen.
Mike Malat. Darren Lovett. Ray Abbott.
I don't think he's going to get that one.
Okay, Dave Treibold is on the line.
All right. So, we're actually conducting two public hearings tonight. The first public hearing is going to be on a building code ordinance to the proposal to put on the ballot, which is why it's being handed around. In brief, this ordinance is intended to give Jackson proper authority to enforce the state building code. Currently, we're doing it under Section 16 of our zoning ordinance. And there's, let's say, a great deal of confusion, both among the board selectmen and even the building inspector, as to what the process really is or should be that we're currently utilizing. And so, the intent of this ordinance is to clarify that process. And in discussion, the planning board felt that it was probably better to set up a separate ordinance outside of the zoning ordinance, given that this really isn't a zoning issue. We felt that it was a better, and rather than try to take a single section in the zoning ordinance and have it apply to both zoning and enforcement of our zoning ordinances, and also you try to use the same section to also enforce a building code, I think that that, trying to do both with the same ordinance is part of the confusion we're currently involved in. So that was the reason to put together something that is separate from the zoning ordinance.
Could I add one little item?
Sure.
Because I think that I keep hearing from some people, another point of confusion, I think, is that a lot of people feel, A, we already had some form of building code in place, and B, we voted on it at town meeting. The difficulty is that those two things were not as specific as what's required by state law. If we're going to enforce the state code, there are I's have to be dotted and T's crossed, and that's what this ordinance is attempting to do.
And in fact, there are some aspects of our current process that I think are in conflict with state law.
That's right.
So that's another issue. And so, I'll open it up to comment on the building ordinance. Yes, David.
I'm Dave Mason, president of Jackson. I've looked through this, and as far as I'm concerned, I think you've done a pretty good job with this. The problem that I have with it is that it continues to ask the town to adopt the building code. Code is adopted to ensure public safety, public welfare. Jackson, everybody adopts this building code, and Jackson is not adopting any building code. The state building code applies to Jackson. What Jackson is doing is deciding whether they want to provide inspection services and enforce the building code. The reason this concerns me is, I'm sure there are people who would prefer not to have a building code. And not too many years ago, in New Hampshire, each town had to vote to adopt the building code. They could have one, or they need to have one. People who might say, "Well, I don't really want a building code," not understanding that they have a building code, that the law will give to them, but here it is. And that the real question here is, is the town going to provide the way we all feel we care to that, or are you going to have to figure it out on your own? So they vote against this because they say, "I don't really want a building code, so I don't want to adopt the building code." This is not clear here, that there is a building code, that you need to comply with, you must comply with, and we're just deciding whether we're going to do it or whether it will the state, the town of Jackson. The little piece that I saw, I don't see anything here, but previously I saw a piece that indicated what was going to be on the warrant, and again, it said, you know, "We want to vote to adopt the building code." I think that's misleading, and I think that should be corrected.
I guess that you could say that we're adopting a code to enforce. It certainly is true that the state building code is law, whether we enforce it or not. I don't think anything that you said in this ordinance or at any point would suggest that the property owner has the option of following the state building code or not. There was some discussion as to whether we should adopt the state building code or not, whether that was necessary. I think the feeling was that it certainly didn't hurt to adopt the state building code, whether it was required or not. In talking to both our attorney and attorneys at the local government center, I don't think there's any clear consensus whether a town should or should not adopt the code that is going to enforce, even if it's the state building code. There is language in the RSA's that talks about a town adopting the building code. You could argue that that language is leftover language from when there was no state building code.
Right.
But I would say the RSA's are not, in my opinion, clear as to whether a building code, even if it is the state building code, should be adopted for a town to enforce, but we felt that it did not harm anything to adopt it.
Especially since the attorney's recommended it, right?
Well, I mean, I don't think that's what Scott said. I think Scott said, correct me if I'm wrong, but there was mixed opinion.
Okay, I remember discussing this at the last meeting when I was opposed to adopt it, and I felt that...
I heard something different as well, but what I heard tonight from Scott was that there was mixed opinion. Perhaps you can clarify that.
Peter Mallya did not feel strongly one way or the other, except that he felt that it would not be harmful to adopt it.
And the NTC said we should adopt it, is that...
I've heard differing opinions.
It certainly doesn't change anything because the state building code is law, but what it is, is misleading. And it's misleading in a negative way, it's misleading, or for some people, a positive way. It's misleading because it gives people the impression, unless they're really watching very carefully and following this, that they have the option of either adopting a code or not adopting the code. And by extension, if they didn't adopt the code, then I guess it wouldn't apply to them. I mean, that would be a logical extension of that thought, and of course, that's not true. It does apply to them whether we adopt a building code or not. So I'm thinking that there should be a change of language here that makes it clear that we're not adopting the code. There's a code that you must comply with, and what we're deciding to do is whether the town is going to enforce it or do the inspections, or whether you, the builder, the homeowner who needs to follow the code, is going to have to figure out how to get that done.
What did, just if I could, I think, because I think it's germane to Dave's comments, at the planning board meeting last, I believe Huntley asked the question, "What happens if this fails?" And I believe your answer to that was, "We go back to the status quo," which is what we're doing right now. So, from that, I think it means that, well, I think that means we continue enforcing the state building code with a imperfect ordinance and with imperfect authority, but we still, I mean, the last authority vote on enforcing the state building code was at town meeting last year.
My other opinion is if this fails, we will be deeper in confusion than we are even now. At that point, there'll be...
Oh, I agree.
It could happen, but if this were to fail, then I think there will certainly be some that says that's an indication the town does not want to enforce the state building code. Whether it kicks back to the current process, it's this, because I can't...
Well, that's a different answer than what you gave Huntley last, earlier this month, I think.
Actually, if you...
I'm sorry.
...take the three first.
I actually have three questions. One, is there a state law that requires towns to enforce state building code?
No.
That's the first question. And the answer is?
No.
Okay. Where'd you get that information? Where'd you get that information?
There is no law that demands that every town in New Hampshire enforce the state building code.
Everything constructed has to comply with it.
Exactly.
But towns don't have to enforce it.
No, if the town does, the state does, though.
Well, if they do...
State has a responsibility.
In the case of single-family residential construction, it's very likely that the state will not do an inspection to be...
I thought you were saying, I actually said they will.
Can I ask my second question?
Sure, I'm sorry.
I have three, actually. The second question is that this adopting of the code requires that the building inspector or code enforcement officer enforce the state building code, issue permits and occupancy permits, and the selectmen do not.
That's correct.
And that who enforces zoning? Does the code enforcement slash building inspector enforce zoning, or does the planning or does the selectman enforce zoning? The third question is that the ordinance requires that the legislative body set the wages of the building inspector, and does this provide for setting the wages of the building inspector?
In the sense that it provides for the selectmen to establish a fee schedule.
Scott, I might be able to clarify that last question. The, this does not, nor does it need to, the town has established the position of building inspector already, and that his salary is established by vote of the budget every year during a town meeting. For instance, this year, that's being set at $15,000. Whether that's sufficient or not, we don't really know, but we're walking into an unknown territory there.
And with respect to enforcing zoning?
It's typical, not necessary, as I understand it, for the same person to do both jobs. I don't believe that the RSA's require that the, I mean, I think that maybe that the...
You have an existing zoning ordinance, that doesn't change.
Do you?
You have an existing zoning ordinance, that probably doesn't change because of the 16.
Yes. We have a section in our current zoning ordinance, Section 16, that provides for enforcement of the zoning ordinance.
By the building inspector or building inspector.
And it doesn't necessarily have to be the same person, but if the workload is such that it makes efficient use of personnel to have the same person do the same job, then that's up to the selectman.
I guess the idea is that to enforce a building code requires some degree of expertise that does not require to enforce the zoning ordinance. And if we have a personnel that can enforce a building code, then he should be able to enforce his own ordinance in terms of their capabilities.
Thank you.
Pete?
When I talked to Ray Burton's office, and they said that the state building code didn't have to be voted by the town, it was law, and Art Grudoff said it is law.
It is law.
So, it states what the building inspector's job is by enforcing the state building code.
The building inspector's job is to enforce the state building code, which is law, but again, it is not law that a town has to enforce the state building code.
Even though it's state law, you don't have to enforce it.
That's correct.
Well, that's not what Ray Burton's office said. When you fire him, Inspector?
For with you, no, I don't mind.
So, you must comply with your inspector.
It's all going to do with Ruck Fund management, it's just a way.
You know, I can remember last year, I talked to the state fire marshal's office, and they were saying that it's where Jackson already had an inspection process in place, that they couldn't drop it legally, because we've had an inspection process in place for years now.
I guess I've never heard that opinion.
Well, he's...
You're saying that whatever process in place, for example, if we pass, if the building code ordinance or proposal tonight is passed at town meeting, you're saying that we could then not stop enforcing?
Yeah, basically, from what he told.
Isn't that what your attorney said, continue to do what you're doing?
Dave?
Dave?
When you recognize?
Phil, Dave, I have a question, it may be a matter of clarification. According to this, if it passes, the building inspector will issue a certificate of occupancy, which would certify the building code requirements and the occupiable. If we don't pass this, then we don't have the building, we don't enforce the building code, the selectmen then would issue a certificate of occupancy, is that correct?
Well, if we don't pass this, the only building inspection process that we have would be Section 16. Currently, it does not, as you recall, does not require certificate of occupancy for single...
What concerns me is that we get into a situation where the selectmen either do issue a certificate of occupancy or don't, because we don't have a system for them to issue a certificate of occupancy. And there's fire, and the town gets involved in lawsuits, and the selectmen are deemed negligent for not having inspected and ensured that building met the building code.
Well, part of what we're trying to rectify with this building code ordinance is a situation just like you described, Phil. We are, again, somewhat in limbo with our current process, and so that really is part of the purpose of this ordinance is to...
I mean, just to expand on that, we've gone, there's been a couple of structures, there's a commercial structure, ones that I'm aware of, where we've gone back and forth, and a lot of time has passed between when the establishment got a certificate of occupancy and when they corrected. Mistakes. Now, I think the town is at risk, I think the selectmen are at risk, when we go issue a certificate of occupancy in a timely manner and certify that the building is met the building code. I think it applies just as well to the single family. I think it applies to any construction. And I'm just, I'm just nervous that we're kind of hanging out there without a resolution. If we don't pass this, we're hanging out there even more.
Well, I'm not sure how you would do this, but I can only imagine that, you know, perhaps we could have set something up where either it's passed or the current process was removed as far as building code inspection, and at that point, we would be left with no process of inspection. I'm not sure how we could better move forward than with the building code ordinance that we have in front of us.
Scott, can I address the issues that...
Actually, Dave's, Dave's hand up.
Okay, I just wanted to point to Huntley's.
All right.
So, if I understood you correctly, Huntley, you quoted someone as saying that we should be able to continue what we've been doing if this ordinance, if this proposal were to fail.
He just said if we had an inspection process in place.
So the reach is, the way the RSA reads, as I understand it, it says that any local enforcement process adopted prior to the effective code of this paragraph about the state building code shall remain in effect unless it conflicts with the state building code. And so, the opinion of the attorneys we've been working with is that it conflicts.
Oh, it does conflict with some of the things, but you still, you have to have a permitting process. Our 105.4, you can't violate the code. 105.8, responsibility, you have to comply. It's the responsibility of the permit holder or his agent to set up for inspections. They have to be inspected either by the town or by the state. And at a future date, if any property is given an occupancy permit that doesn't meet code and does not have those inspections, that occupancy permit's null and void. And that can be at a future date, too.
But not probably for single-family homes?
Single-family homes, yes. That's what this is.
It talks in here about single-family and two-family homes being exempt from the requirements.
You can't exempt them by state law, because you were already saying that, because we, the reason we're changing it is because we had a, what was it, a $10,000 limit on inspections before you have a permitting process. And the state says from zero, and you've already said that you can't be less stringent than the code, you can only be more stringent than the code. And by dropping that, you're being less stringent than the code.
And I did ask that specific question of an attorney at the local government center, and pointed out that North Conway, or Conway, does not do single-family residential inspection. And he said, "Has the state fire marshal addressed that?" And I said, "Not to my knowledge," and he said, "Well, that's your answer."
But does that make it right? I mean, this is, like, you better...
At the moment, we're not, let's leave the single family to the second public hearing.
Do you want to mention that, that talks about the single-family and two-family dwellings?
I'm not sure it's relevant.
Is it relative to...
I think that's exactly what he's talking about.
Right, then it would be better for them to talk about single-family and two-family dimensions.
Oh, okay, I just thought we'd address the issues.
And you'll actually have to be at the point.
Well, um...
Don't touch them.
It says, "For any municipality which has not adopted an enforcement mechanism under RSA 67451," which is what apparently we don't comply with, "the contractor of the building, building component or structure shall notify the state fire marshal concerning the type of construction or work construction begins excluding one and two-family dwellings."
It's not what it says in this.
Okay, well, that's just...
That's it.
Dave's International President of Congress.
We have, we have inspection process now, because of a couple of words in the ordinance, it doesn't comply. Those words could have been changed, some of the slot that this whole thing is unnecessary. Those words could have been changed. I guess I would ask, if we're worried about, if this doesn't pass, what will we do? Will we have a process that doesn't comply? Why didn't we come forward and change those few words so we would have a process that complied on that basis?
I believe, because we felt that it required more than a couple of words changed, and as I explained at the beginning of the meeting, we also felt that trying to accomplish two completely different jobs with the same ordinance is...
I'm not saying this wouldn't be a better idea. All I'm saying is that if it were not to pass, and then we're going to hear, "Well, we have a process that doesn't comply, what will we do now?" We could fix that by changing those words. And Betsy, we do have a process that predates that, so that's...
The process we had that predates it was a zoning ordinance enforcement process.
That's right, so it stays.
It is not a building code enforcement process.
Excuse me?
It's not a building code enforcement process. It was written as a zoning ordinance enforcement process, not as building code.
And that's the common opinion. That wasn't the previous opinion. We had an attorney that had a different opinion, we got rid of that attorney, now we have an attorney that has the opinion.
We've had many attorneys' opinion on that, and they all differ, other than our previous counsel. Gary?
It's, I hear still a lot of resistance and obstruction to what's going on, and I guess I find that kind of disappointing. I mean, it seems obvious that the town has supported the idea of enforcing the state building code. What we're proposing tonight, or what's being proposed tonight, is something that's new and different than what we're currently doing. And what we're currently doing does not satisfy the minimum requirements of properly enforcing the state building code. This achieves that. And I would suggest if you're in favor of the town enforcing the state building code, that you should be speaking in favor of this, this accomplishes that. The state laws change. They changed this year. This year alone, the changes made invalidate Section 16 as code enforcement for the state building code even more. It's the responsibility of the planning board and the select force to adopt two current state laws. This, again, achieves that. This is what has been put forth as the minimum requirement from the local government center to have a valid enforcement mechanism for the state building code. And we can spend a lot of time arguing what we did in the past or what we didn't do in the past, but what's being put forth here as an offer is, again, what is minimum required for current state laws. And I would suggest if you're in support of the town enforcing the state building code, you should be in favor of this.
And I would say that if we could change Section 16 instead, and left the enforcement process for the building code in Section 16, and tried to use Section 16 for that, that might not have passed either, and we would result in the same place. I don't think changing Section 16 is likely to have achieved a better result than building code enforcement, building code ordinance that we have by this. Gary?
The only other who would mention it, if this does fail to pass, then as we've been faced with, the other year we've been faced with this, it'll be to the next board of selectmen to decide how building permits are issued.
Any other comments?
One more question. Again, I'll ask the question again. You answered it, Scott, that you don't feel the state requires towns to enforce the state building code. How does the rest of the board feel on that same question?
Is there anyone on the board that feels that the state does require towns to enforce the state building code? That's another question.
That was clearly stated in the RSA's.
Well, I wonder whether or not that applies to commercial construction or not. I've not considered it. That, you know, what it means, I'm not sure what your, what your question meant, if I could, because does that mean that then we don't have inspection for smoke detectors? That means we have no commercial inspections at all? Is that what you're suggesting?
No, no, I'm not suggesting anything. I'm asking a question, trying, does state law require that towns enforce the building code?
I don't know what the number is, and Betsy's probably finding it, but there is one RSA that says if, if a town does not have an enforcement process, then the enforcement will be done by the state fire marshal.
Right.
So the board is in agreement, but for one, that the state does not require towns to enforce the building code. Here's my guess. Thank you.
And not to have my view mischaracterized, I'm simply saying, I don't know, I'm not an attorney. I understand how many of the other people on board come to that conclusion.
Peter?
Peter Benson, Jackson, I'll just say two things really briefly. The first one is, I think that people in this town spoke loud and clear last year in their vote, intent and direction to all boards about what they want to happen in this community. Secondly, as a public safety official in this town for over 20 years, and I can't believe I'm even saying that, why are we trying to get away with the minimums all the time? Why can't we exceed? I mean, when I hear comparisons to other communities, that scares me. We should be comparing ourselves to ourselves. I've seen the direct effects of inspected buildings, code enforcement versus non-inspected buildings and non-code enforcement from a public safety standpoint. And the next time any of you want to see it at 3:00 or 4:00 in the morning, I'll give you a pager and you can come and join me, because we see it all the time. We should be doing the utmost, and it's not, it's not just good policy, it's not just good community planning, it's good safety, and it's being good, it's being respectful of process. So I would encourage us to not think about what we can do for the minimums, but think about what we can do to exceed the minimums.
Do you have a suggestion for what is included in your ordinance that you'd like to see?
No, but I'd like to see us... No, but I'd like to see us think beyond just what we can do to get through the state's process. We should be absolutely enforcing the minimum state's process. And if we have to go to the IBC, that's fine with me, too. I'm being very selfish here because I put myself out there all the time for this. So I would like to see us think not just what we can do for the minimum, but what we can do that's right for this community. That's all I'll say. I'm not an expert on the RSAs, and I don't quote them because they make me.
Scott might be able to answer that question, run clarity for that. Peter, the minimum that we're talking about requirements for is minimums of law to enforce the state building code. The state building code is the international building code, the international residential code, the national fire code, the national electric code, the national plumbing code. It is all of those things combined. So those standards would be what were adopted. The minimum requirements that I'm referring to are the legal requirements to enforce those codes. Because the codes are different than the law. It says in the code, it's not the law. Code's building code, the law's the law. In order to enforce those codes, the town needs to go through a minimum process to achieve that. And the local government center has stated that what's in this ordinance are the minimum requirements in order to enforce those extensive codes.
I understand.
But you're talking about not inspecting single homes.
At the moment, we're not.
You're not?
No. We'll talk about that in the second public hearing. At the moment, we're talking about building code ordinance that inspects or enforces the state building code for all construction except that construction that is expressly exempted in the international residential code.
And I just want to add, and where Mr. Peter was saying, oh, this proposal does go beyond the minimum state requirements because in this proposal, we're saying, single-family homes are part of it. Whereas the state does not require that in the way I understand it.
Betsy could clarify that a little bit, too. The state doesn't not require, again, single-family homes to comply with the state building code.
Right.
Nor does the state necessarily exempt them from any process. Currently, just to counter what Huntley said before, the state fire marshal office does not and probably would not be inspecting single-family homes if we were to exclude them. And, you know, that's, I've got, I can show you emails from the state fire marshal, not just people from his office, where he states unequivocally that New Hampshire has a tradition of a man's home is his castle. And that's a statement from the fire marshal office that I have in writing. So if we wanted to see what we can, but that's beyond the point. The law doesn't necessarily say that they're excluded from the inspection process. It just says that it may not be done by the state fire marshal.
And doesn't have to be done by the towns?
I don't see necessarily where it says that specifically.
Gina?
Just a quick, the thing that still bothers me about all this is the process we went through last year, okay? Even though it's been demigrated down to the point, well, our vote didn't mean anything. I saw 160 people stand up and it was time to vote for permitting and the process that we've had. I've heard a selectman tonight say in the selectmen's meeting that we didn't need that kind of stuff that they had in the big towns. My problem with all this is if this were to fail, it goes back into a clock hat and you have the same people generating more interest again next year to eliminate or obfuscate what might potentially be a safety issue for others. I think we should think of the process, yes. Think of the law, yes. But also think of what the people voted for last year, and in infinite wisdom, that's called democracy.
But again, I don't see that what we have in front of us is in any conflict to what the people voted for.
But there was a second portion. This amending process, it probably won't fly.
We're going to talk about that.
I understand that, but people have to understand that this was the first step. The second step was eliminating something else. So I don't think that most people would understand that. Hopefully, it won't go that way. But anyway, sorry, I just wanted to speak.
I didn't understand. Please. Second article.
Over the years, I guess, while I've been keeping track of things going on, and my, I think my objection to the enforcement was that it was costing too much money. The building inspectors, the battle, the period of the years, they were paid too much money. I'm not sure they were qualified to do what they're, you know, what they're. Even under a year where the duties of the building inspector to review and approve building designs, what would you be approving in a design or disapproving, other than what's in the zoning thing of height requirements?
Whether the design meets the state building code.
Dealing with structure, the building inspector probably is not qualified to make that kind of decision.
I believe that you're hiring and kind of hiring a building inspector that is qualified to make that decision.
Is he a licensed structural engineer? You know, I don't think you can, you know, my point is, if you're going to enforce all these things to the letter of the law, it could be very simple. Everybody's trying to make it complicated. You probably have to have a licensed structural engineer to look at those plans. You have to probably have a licensed electrician, electrical engineer, plumbing, or whatever, a gas fitter. And, yeah, you can, you can have all, you know, you can get your little certificates online for, you know, for 50 bucks or 100 bucks. But if you're going to enforce everything to the letter of the law, it's going to cost the town a lot of money. That's always been, that's my objection. I'm certainly not against building codes or anything else. I've built dollar houses and I've built million-dollar buildings. And, you know.
But there's certainly no question that there's a cost to this, which is, I think, one of the reasons why towns have the ability to choose to take on that cost or not. As far as qualifications are concerned, I don't think that the inspector needs to be capable of engineering a safe structure. More so, they need to be capable of inspecting a structure against a code that has already been established. And so it's the code that determines what is engineered properly. It's the inspector's duty to ensure that the construction adheres to the code.
But most of the things in your codes, it'll lay out a certain, certain rules, the spacing or whatever. But if you have a complicated beam network or anything else, the code doesn't, doesn't have anything to say about that. It has to comply. But somebody looking at it.
No, but if somebody's building a building like that, it's going to be, plans will be undone by a structural engineer.
That's true, okay. The next thing would be.
So you have a stamp on the drawing? The building inspector sees that the structural engineer has done the drawings? That's fine. Then the building inspector's job is to make sure it's built according to.
Okay, that's, I agree. That's fine. You've got an architect's stamp or an engineer's stamp. Is a town now going to require that every plan that comes in here has to be stamped by an electrical engineer or an engineer?
I don't think so. I think that's the duty of the building inspector. I'm sorry, I shouldn't be answering.
You agree.
I think, I think it's the duty of the building inspector to make a judgment. Okay, this is a stick-built house. We don't, you know, it's fine that you, you know, the raptors are, meet what, you know, are of a sufficient depth that meets the, what's described in the building code, fine. If it's a complex structure, he'll make the judgment that, you know, you need an engineer to look. What's, I mean, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Well, last year, what did Andy cost us? $5,600, something like that? That's not a lot of money. Also, I've talked to Andy extensively as far as, like, electrical plumbing. If he has an issue, he'll call the state fire marshal's office. If he needs an engineer, he's called in an engineer to look at the work. And as far as an engineered print, from a plumbing point of view, I cannot, if a print comes, or a blueprint has come across and it's been designed by an engineer, it doesn't, if and if it doesn't pass state plumbing code, I have to adhere to the code and not what the engineer has, you know, put on the print. So basically, you're not going to gain anything by a stamp because you can't go by it 100%.
Peter?
Can I just clarify that the inspector doesn't cost the town money? It costs the permittee money. As a permittee, I'm well aware of that.
Well, there's a fee schedule. I don't know if it's possible, the fee schedule might not cover the inspector's.
No, I think it does completely cover that. So, I mean, it's not a cost incurred by the town per se.
But it is a cost incurred by the town's people, which I.
Well, if I can finish, and I'm the last one to want to pay any more than I have to, but I have seen numerous examples in my construction personally and in others where the inspector, because he is an objective eye and not on the job site every day, and sees things in a different light than a contractor, has caught things, both big and small, that a well-meaning contractor may not have caught. And I think that, as you're going forward and going to an insurance company for your insurance, is money well spent. It's, I don't view it as a cost, I view it as an investment. Because it's, it's just good practice.
Jared?
If you don't mind me responding to that. Peter, I agree with you on that philosophically, but the role of the town building inspector is not actually to insure those sites.
And what do I pay a fee for?
You pay the fee to cover the town's administrative costs for that. And this is something I've heard before in the towns, that people say that, well, I'd like having the building inspector come because then my home is insured to be safe. Although it may be providing that to happen, that's not the intent of the building inspector, nor is the town saying that's happening. In fact, we're almost saying the exact opposite. What the law says is that that building inspector and the town is indemnified from anything that may occur wrong in that building as a result of something going wrong in the construction process.
Jared, you're talking in a theoretical, I'm talking in a practical way.
What I'm trying to explain to you, and again, this is not an argument against it, this is again, an argument for it, if you can hear me out here, but those things are not being insured by having a building inspector. What having a building inspector and enforcement enforcement does is it puts the idea in the contractor and the homeowner's head that there's codes I'm going to have to comply with. And that alone is probably the biggest assurance that the code is going to be complied with. And it's probably the best argument to have for it. But to think that because we have a building inspector who goes in to inspect, that all your problems are going to be found, that's simply not true. And in fact, the building inspector is very much exempt from that happening. So if they miss something, it's okay. They're indemnified from something being wrong from them missing something. But that's not the important point. The important point is that we have a process that people have to comply with. That alone is going to assure compliance more than what the building inspector does find or doesn't.
I don't know if she, just to circle. Well, I think, I think having an inspector does add another level of safety, but it does not necessarily assure that your construction will be safe. If the building inspector could make a mistake in the same way the contractor or the plumber, the electrician could make a mistake. You know, I guess a potential concern about inspection is it may provide the homeowner with a false assurance that everything is. But that would be a reason to make sure that the building inspector is as qualified as possible so that.
Does this war, or a previous, this war, eliminate the $10,000 exemption?
Yes, there is no $10,000 exemption. Except, there is no $10,000 exemption in the building code ordinance that we have here. We have decided to leave Section 16, the zoning ordinance, untouched.
So it will remain?
It will remain, and that's for zoning ordinance enforcement, not building.
Yeah, another question. Can, somebody's building a house, and they're building it on their own. If they have reasonably detailed plans enough for a building inspector to look at and know the construction details and plumbing, electrical, whatever, and they're building it on their own, does this say they cannot occupy the premises until it's completed and approved?
Correct.
Yeah. I believe it.
I need a C, correct.
You'd need to satisfy the state building code.
I would suggest that maybe you amend this enough so that you could get pre-approved plans, so somebody who's working according to the plans can occupy. They could be asked to, or required to leave if they don't follow the plan.
Scott, RSA 676, either 11, 12, or 13, allows for the building inspector to issue a temporary certificate of occupancy if the building inspector finds that the home is safely, is safe to inhabit.
Thank you. That answers my question. Thank you very much.
No, I just want to say, I do agree with Jared as far as with the building inspector before, but, you know, it is always nice to have a second pair of eyes in there to look at things. But as far as, my understanding from different classes I've taken, I have to take them every year, that if you're living in a house and you have a functioning toilet, tub, or shower, vanity, and kitchen sink, then you can, you can live in that house and add on. It's just if you don't have all those functioning fixtures that you can't be living in it while you're working on it.
I have one other question. You're putting on a bay window on your home, and if the structure, the existing structure does not meet the code, does this mean to put the bay window on, you have to go back through the existing building and bring it to code?
No.
You sure about that? Because I've seen that happen.
Is it limited to the construction that is a box?
I think the caveat to that would be if it's a large bay window and in puncture and.
Oh, I understand. No, I meant it had a circulus there where it should have a circulus there inside. I've seen efforts to support, to block people from doing anything in their building because the rest of it only didn't meet the code. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, on that, I'm not familiar with the building codes, but I have seen that if you're going to replace more than a certain percentage of a house, that you've got to bring the whole place up to code. I just wanted to make a comment, because I'm co-chair of the Library Building Committee. I spend a fair amount of time. Most of the contractors were local. I think they had a good reputation. Our experience having Andy in there was, I couldn't have been happier with it. He did a lot for us. I think he did a lot, he brought help to the contractor and the folks that were in there. And I just, I really couldn't have been happier. I had many of his money well spent. We did look at the time, we looked at the past couple of years when Andy was the building inspector, his costs versus a fee. For all intents and purposes, it was a why. Yes, townspeople, you know, and some of the townspeople are, had a town residence, they have a second home, they're paying for the inspection. The town itself, taxpayers aren't paying any.
No, never have. Any other comments? Okay. I'm going to bring this, this particular public hearing to a close. Do we, the board, now want to deliberate and draw a vote of recommendation? Do we want to go through the second public hearing and then hand a vote after?
Are we voting? I mean, this is a sufficient, you could actually vote on how to recommend or not to recommend?
Well, if there are.
Or would we do that?
This is an opportunity to propose any amendments to the ordinance in front of us. If it's a significant amendment, it would then require a second public hearing. If there are no amendments or no significant amendments, then I guess my attempt would be that we vote to recommend or not recommend and move on to the next article.
I have a couple of amendments I'd like to propose. One of them would be to try to address Gabe Mason's comment about why we're proposing it, to make it really clear to people that compliance with the state building code is a requirement for all building construction. And so I would assume that we could best get. And so I would assume that we could best address that with a top three paragraph.
I think that perhaps that particular issue can be addressed with an information sheet that goes out to all the voters ahead of time. And I think it'd be very important that we do that so that the voters are informed as to what exactly it is that they're voting on. And, and I think that particular point that Dave makes can be, hopefully.
I think that if we were to talk about pursuant to RSA 67451, we should also refer to 155A, saying that the state building code must be complied with, and that Jackson chooses to, if we can word it in some way that we were.
Yeah, I think the 67451, I believe, is the enabling language in which we actually adopt enforcement. So I think 155 would be.
It would be informed.
Well, I think it'd be actually misleading at that point.
Okay. How so?
Because the sentence reads, you know, the pursuit to 67451 is a reference to the authority by which the town is adopting the enforcement. It's not a reference to what the building code is.
Right. So basically, you're arguing that because it's a state law, we shouldn't refer to it and maybe confuse the issue? Is that what you're saying?
No, I'm saying the sentence, the preamble of the sentence.
Well, I understand that, but no, I'm asking, why don't we include something other about the state building code?
We have that.
It's later on in the third paragraph.
But that's just saying that our building code incorporates it, it's not really saying that the SBC requires compliance. And I'm wondering if we should add that in.
To me, if this passes, then we're requiring compliance, even if someone were to think that the state doesn't. If this doesn't pass, then whatever we put into it doesn't matter.
That's good reasoning.
I'll take your comment, we did propose the public hearing.
Right. It's okay if we propose it, it'll stand corrected, sorry.
If it pertains to the discussion we're having now, you're welcome to.
Yeah, it actually does pertain to it, it's just a suggestion. And I agree, and I agree with Dave, he got me thinking about, you know, what people are actually thinking about. And what I see is hereby adopts the enforcement of, you know, if you include the word enforcement, you don't even have to even say you're complying with state laws, you're adopting the enforcement. So if you include the word enforcement after the words adopting, it may help clarify the case for people. In addition to the information sheet, when you're here in the voting room looking at it, at least the word enforcement is clarifying what you're really trying to adopt, you're adopting the enforcement.
So you would, you'd make a change in the third paragraph?
Actually, there is three words adopts, the first three paragraphs. If you're adopting the enforcement in each one of those cases, it may help to clarify.
I think the first adopt refers to the adoption of the ordinance, so I'm not sure it applies there, but I could see how you could change the second and the third paragraphs to something like adoption and enforcement.
Right, but in the first paragraph, you're really not adopting, the way I understand it, you're really adopting the enforcement of the New Hampshire State Building Code. So the town of Jackson in there is almost not what you're really referring to, you're adopting the enforcement of the New Hampshire State Building Code, if I understand you correctly. You know, if I correctly understand you. And if I'm confused, can you imagine somebody else?
I don't, I mean, I think adding enforcement, at least to the second and the third paragraph, might be worthwhile, but am I the only one?
Is the town of Jackson building code different than the state of New Hampshire building code?
Not.
At this point?
At this point, no.
Well, and I think that's where Denise is coming from, saying, well, we're adopting the state of New Hampshire building code and enforcing that. You're making it sound like the town of Jackson has something above and beyond, and we're not at that point yet. Well, I think that goes back to the question on what some lawyers are recommending, that we include the letters that we're adopting. We're adopting our building code, which is word for word, it incorporates the state law.
We're adopting the state building code, it has the town of Jackson building code.
There you go.
Do you follow my, my rule that when you say we're adopting, you're going to vote? Would you like to adopt? No, I wouldn't like to adopt. You've already got it. You're not adopting any building code, the building code is there. You're simply saying we're either going to provide enforcement services or we're not going to provide enforcement services. And that's misleading. It misleads people, they're thinking, they're voting on whether they're going to have a building code, whether they're going to adopt a Jackson building code or not. And that's misleading.
Would it suffice if in a descriptive paragraph that Sarah was discussing, talking about, that we point out in that paragraph that the state building code is law and applies to whether the town of Jackson adopts an enforcement process of it?
Personally, I would be happy with something like Sarah suggests, and to make sure that the, the way this was presented on the ballot made that very clear, that this is an enforcement process that we're deciding to provide or not provide.
I think all the concern here is if by chance this doesn't pass, will the ordinance that didn't pass send the wrong message? Is that very correct? So if in proposing this ordinance to the voters, we have a descriptive paragraph that makes it very clear that this is simply an adoption of an enforcement process, not an adoption of a building code that would be in effect whether or not we enforce it, would make me happy.
That's what we're going at.
Again, that seems to me an attempt to cover the past, and this shouldn't be about that. In other words, I mean, the local government center has suggested that what's offered in this ordinance is the minimum legal requirement, and they have stated unequivocally several times in several different PowerPoint presentations, in several different discussions that I've had with them, that the law suggests that a building code has to be adopted in order to be able to enforce it. That's what they're saying. And so I think to change that puts the authority we have to properly enforce it in jeopardy. And what Dave's talking about is, I think, an attempt to cover the past. We shouldn't be worried about that. We should be trying to move forward.
Jerry, would you be opposed to not, if we were to not change the current wording of the ordinance, but when we put it on the ballot, have a descriptive paragraph that points out that the building code is a law that needs to be followed whether we enforce it or oppose it?
I don't, I don't think that would hurt at all, and I don't think that that would change the intent of anything and even require a second public hearing. Hearing form.
If you're going to include that, then I would also include that the law does not require the towns to enforce it.
In that descriptive paragraph?
I mean, if you're going to be, if you're going to have leading paragraphs, let's have full disclosure.
Okay.
Well, except then that's, that would be misleading because it ignores the question of, if this fails, we go back to the status quo, and the status quo at the moment is enforcing the state building code. And what you propose, Jerry, would, I think, give people the wrong impression that by voting no on this, they are eliminating all enforcement. You're putting more than one no, Frank. What I said, Frank, was that it is fact that the state does not require towns to enforce state building code. That's just a fact. You might not like that fact. I'm not disagreeing with what you're saying. Okay, then all I'm saying is, if you're going to put paragraphs in the ordinance that lead in one direction, let's have full disclosure and put it out there.
I understand that, Deb, but I think that we need to move something forward, and we keep arguing about the past, and we really should not be doing that. One thing I will state about our status quo, and I know this for a fact, and I know people don't believe me and don't trust me, and that's fine, but our current status quo puts the town in serious jeopardy of something like the Red Box Fire. If we had done the inspections there and had a certificate of occupancy for them to current building codes, then we would have been involved in lawsuits we would not want it to be involved in. Our current status quo is not proper authorization for the enforcement of the code, and that puts the town in liabilities it should not be in. And we can have that argument all this year if we want to, but that's, again, to cover things that happened in the past. Why can't we look at what the town wants, which seems to be code enforcement? And again, what the local government says, that this ordinance is a minimum legal requirement in order to get that proper authority. And if you're for it, then, then why not be for this? And not to be squabbling on semantics because we're trying to worry about what we did in the past and didn't do in the past. It would be nice to move this forward in a positive way. I think the planning board stated pretty clearly, I think people finally know now that enforcement is an option. They had been told differently in the past, but I think that's finally been clarified. Whether that gets into question or not, I don't think is important at this point, other than having something before the voters that would give the town the proper authorization to do what it seems everybody wants us to be doing.
I would like to see us put in wording as recommended, I think by both Denise and Dave to some extent, such as if you take the very first paragraph, the first sentence, where you say, "The town of Jackson pursuant to the RSA 67451 hereby adopts a process to enforce the New Hampshire State Building Code and also to establish a town of Jackson building code which incorporates the New Hampshire State Building Code." So that could be our lead on sentence about it, and then we could go on to describe things, and we wouldn't need that third paragraph. But I think it's better than just having it in the explanatory wording, because some people won't read that explanatory wording, they're old to this, and perhaps if other people here are confused, they may also be confused. Maybe you should force it here.
I think that that would be a very good compromise, a smart thing to do, and I don't think that that changes the intent of any of this, nor would require another public hearing. I think that that's just, you know.
Can you repeat again?
I would propose in that first sentence saying, "The town of Jackson pursuant to the RSA 67451 hereby adopts a process to enforce the New Hampshire State Building Code and also to establish a town of Jackson building code which incorporates the New Hampshire State Building Code," essentially using some of the same wording as in that third paragraph.
Does anyone on the board feel that would require another public hearing?
No.
Is that a motion?
Yes, I think that motion.
A second, Deb.
Any further discussion on it? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Any other proposed amendments to the ordinance?
Before we go into that, I mean, should we, if we're going to go through all sorts of amendments, should we, looking at the clock, have, I mean, we aren't going to have time for another hearing to give the second, I mean, there's another, there's another question. I'm asking about time management. What's the appropriate thing to do here?
You can have one more hearing, right?
Yes, but I think.
Does anyone besides Betsy have an amendment still?
I only have one more. And this is basically listening to people here. I think Dick made a good point about a temporary permit, and I looked at the RSA, and as Jerry suggested, 67612 does say something about, it says that the building inspector can issue temporary occupancy permits not to exceed 30 days, but with the ability to renew it. So we could just indicate that kind of thing pursuant to RSA 67612.
Does that even have to be in here? I mean, it's state law.
It's already in place, right?
But if we are not saying.
You still have to follow state law.
It's already in place as a state law, is that correct?
It is, it is in state law that the building inspector has directed to this, and we don't need to.
Are we ready to take a vote on?
Have the, have the selectmen voted to support this unanimously officially?
I don't know if they voted. Certainly seemed like there was unanimous support at the meeting this evening.
Where are you officially?
Officially, we have voted. What we technically said, we were in favor.
Officially, that's not a vote the selectman will take. We explained that at our meeting, that for ballot questions, we actually don't vote to recommend or not recommend.
No, I, I think we, getting into this six months ago, I think it was the expectation that we go to the town with unanimous, even though you don't have to, they certainly can vote.
We polled ourselves this evening, and we were, all three of us were unanimous support of this ordinance.
Okay. So I just would like that to get reflected in our minutes.
So do we need a motion to vote to recommend?
Do you?
Okay, let's take a vote to recommend the building ordinance with the amendment that Betsy proposed. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay.
It's got a point of order, it's probably semantics, but technically, you would ask for a motion to recommend, and then a second to that motion.
I was asking whether we needed a motion.
You do. You'd ask for a motion to recommend, and then you get that in a second, and then you vote.
I make that motion to choose what.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, you're right. Tonight, Ray is not here, and so George, I believe, would be the voting in the ultimate. Sorry about that. Just to make sure we do it absolutely officially correctly, I move that we vote to recommend the building code ordinance with the amendment that Betsy proposed.
Second.
All in favor? All opposed?
It's got, just to clarify further. Who's got the duck, Dave? You don't make a motion to not recommend, the motion can only be to recommend, and then it can be voted against, but you can't make a motion to not recommend something. That might be pertinent to the next question.
My motion votes to recommend.
Yeah, that's right.
Who's got the duck, Dave?
Scott, a question before we start. I would like to make, change the wording of what the amendment is. How do we do that?
To change which wording?
Yeah, the wording that we have here is incorrect, and it really doesn't say what the process would be, but I would like to change that to what I have come up with.
Which article?
We're talking about the second article that we're going to have a hearing on.
Okay.
Okay?
And so I'm still not sure which wording I want to change.
Well, I'm looking at this wording here.
Yeah.
Okay, versus, because it's not true of what it says, that's not correct.
You're saying that on the, on the, it's not worded properly?
That's correct. Frank brought out the point the last meeting, that there was not a specific recommendation to put a paragraph that says what this would do.
Okay.
And so.
This.
Beyond the words of explanation.
This wording, this is not something that's set in stone.
Okay.
At all.
Okay, all right.
We're going to vote on the amendment to the ordinance, and then how it's presented here will depend on that.
Okay, now, we, the board, taking this on the last meeting, it was suggested that the selectmen would, now, where does that stand?
I'm sorry, I was.
Well, let me, let me, we're going to start the second public hearing. The second public hearing is to consider a proposed amendment to the state, to the town of Jackson building code ordinance. That amendment would exclude. That amendment would exclude single-family residential construction from the permitting At the last meeting, we had a great deal of discussion about this. The board is divided on this particular issue. I've talked with Peter Malia, the town council, a couple times since. His opinion is that the planning board voted to put this amendment on the ballot, and we are therefore bound to do so unless there is a motion from the prevailing side of the vote when the vote is taken. And if that motion then to be, if the motion was to rescind or reconsider that amendment and that motion then passes, then that would change where we're headed with it. At that last meeting, we, I made a motion to provide language for that amendment, which would simply be an additional item lettered in in paragraph seven, which would simply say, in paragraph seven lists the exemptions from the permitting process. And so that additional item would simply be, as I proposed, the word "single-family residential construction" as one of the things exempted from the permitting process. That motion was voted down at the meeting, but in discussion with Peter Malia, his feeling is that the board is still bound to put this on the ballot, and that even though that motion was voted down, that would still be the route that we would take unless there was an amendment proposed that was different and voted to...
I don't understand. You mean, if the people who are voting tonight are opposed to this, it still goes on the ballot?
Correct. Unless, if there's a motion tonight by someone on the prevailing side of the vote in September, that would be the only way that this would not go on the ballot.
That seems, I still will find that very difficult for all sorts of reasons, but to begin, I mean, in the end, we have, we have yet to vote. We have a concept that we voted to go forward. We have no language on what that amendment is. I still have a hard time, very difficult time, believing Peter is making that argument. I mean, because we have no amendment. I mean, we have no language.
I'll read you.
I know you have language that you'd like to put in, but there's not any language that this board, the planning board, has approved.
According to Peter, that language would be sufficient to satisfy the vote in September and therefore be qualified. I'll read you exactly what Peter said.
Well, and, you know, notwithstanding the fact that the amendment that we voted on, we voted to go pursue, was an amendment to the zoning ordinance and not a building code ordinance.
Peter, again, felt that that does not make a difference. I asked him about that specifically.
This is somewhat Kafka-like, I have to say.
I will also say that a board that chooses to take up or ignore actions taken by that same board based on the momentary political makeup, that does not make any sense to me either.
Then we can, well, I've said my piece.
So I'll read, I'll read just for the record what Peter said in my first...
If I could, so that means we may well end up in the position of the planning board recommending amendment to this ordinance, and that same planning board, the planning board voting to propose amendment, and that same planning board voting to not recommend the town its adoption.
That could be very well the case.
That is absurd.
No, I, personally, I don't believe so. Jerry made the comment at the selectmen's meeting, and I agree with the comment that choosing to enforce single-family residential construction is an option that the state allows towns in New Hampshire, that the planning board may not feel that that, may not choose to recommend that, but I still, I don't think it's inconsistent or inappropriate to allow the voters to make that decision regardless of what the planning board thinks. I also think, I know there's been a lot of discussion about the votes at previous town meetings, both last year but also in 2009. Clearly, there's a great deal of conflicting interpretation of all the votes that have been taken so far at town meeting. And what we're doing, as Jerry has said, is new and different than what we've done in the past. And I just personally realize it's new enough and different enough that we ought to be giving the town, we should not be second guessing what the town wants. We should be giving the town the opportunity to choose what the town wants as provided by law in New Hampshire. And so let me please read Peter Malia's comments, so at least we have that behind us. So, one question I ask Peter is, if the selectmen do not put the exclusion option on the ballot and the planning board won't pass any necessary language for the ordinance, then what happens? Peter's answer to that. I'm beginning to wonder if it's even necessary for the planning board to pass any specific language for this single-family construction exclusion option, because if the article passes as I drafted it, then the legislative body will have approved an amendment to the building code to amend paragraph seven and exclude single-family residential construction from the building code permitting process. Therefore, if the article passes, then it would be appropriate to add a subparagraph end to paragraph seven that simply says "single-family residential construction." I then followed up on that and said, "What impact does last week's vote to not approve my motion to add a subparagraph end?" Essentially said the same thing that Peter recommended, "single-family residential construction." Peter's answer to that was, "Regarding last week's vote, I think it's safe to say that after the vote received, the legal opinion that if the warrant article passes in substantially the same form as it is now written, paragraph seven can be amended accordingly. An additional vote that the planning board do so is not necessary. Of course, if the warrant article undergoes significant changes as a result of the public hearing process, then I might have to revisit that thing."
So what can we do after the public hearing? Can we, even if, as Betsy suggests, even if there's overwhelming support at this hearing, not to go forward, we still have to go forward?
That is my understanding, unless, again, there's a motion from the other side. We rescind that vote of that amendment, and we vote, and we vote to rescind it.
The vote, it would appear on the ballot, but it would have the, how many members of the planning board recommend it, and how many do not.
Will this amendment apply to both the new ordinance if it passes and the, or the existing ordinance as it sits?
This amendment would, the ordinance that we looked at in the previous public hearing would replace the building code inspection or enforcement process that we currently have opposed. So assuming that that building code ordinance passes, this amendment would then apply to the new building code ordinance.
I understand that, but if the new amendment, if the new ordinance does not pass, will it apply to the existing?
No.
And why not?
Because the ordinance that it applies to doesn't exist.
This is an amendment to the building code ordinance.
And it specifically says as part of it, it will only take effect if the article above it asks me to adopt the building code takes effect.
So if this does not pass, and the selectmen feel that, if the building code ordinance does not pass, but the amendment for some reason does, and the building, the selectmen feel that we still have a process to be followed, then the amendment would not apply to that process. I mean...
You know, in the past few months since this has all taken place, I've been kind of polling a lot of my customers, a lot of weekend people. They own condos and houses up here, both in Jackson and in Barca. And their opinion is, they've always thought that Bartlett and Jackson, that inspection process is for homes. Three of these people are looking at homes. They have condos, are looking at homes, and they were shocked when I told them the Town of Jackson is thinking about not having residential inspections. And I told them, and they were also shocked when I told them Bartlett didn't have residential inspections. And my recommendation to them was, if they buy real estate, make sure that they always hire an independent inspector because of the process that Bartlett goes through and what we might enter into in Jackson. I think it would be a big mistake, because can you imagine the Boston Globe if they ever got a hold of an article that Jackson does not do inspections of residential properties? What would that do to people coming up to your business?
My understanding is that more...
Keep them out. Keep them out.
There they come.
Are you annoyed?
Probably more than you are.
That shows you...
Let's bring the meeting to order, please. My understanding in talking to the LGC is they were shocked that a town the size of Jackson does do residential.
Who was that?
An attorney to the local government.
Yeah, but I'm talking to people that are buying.
Well, I understand. More towns, as I understand it, more towns in New Hampshire of our size do not have residential, or I think probably any enforcement process in place than do. And so it's, if there's a norm in New Hampshire, the norm is not to do enforcement for town or something.
Plumbing and electrical has to be inspected.
But not by the town.
It has to be inspected.
But we're talking about town enforcement process here.
But make it simple.
My few years in the real estate business, I would say 99.9% or 99% of homes are inspected on purchase, that they hire inspectors. The recommendation that we make as representing buyers, that they hire inspectors, and if they're licensed, you know, or maybe not licensed, they're qualified inspectors.
I'll think you're comparing two different kinds of inspections, inspection that happens. The sale of a house is far less demanding and looks at far less material than the inspection while a house is being built. I mean, remember, most of the house is already, the sheet rock's already up, you can't see how the wiring was done, you can't see how the plumbing was done.
They pull plugs, they do...
I know, I know. I've gone through it.
A good inspector does a pretty good job.
Well, but there's a huge gap between what you can do during construction and what happens at the end. I'm sorry.
I would just like to ask that all the comments I made in the previous public session be added to this public session. But I would like to hear from those who voted for this amendment in September. I would like for them to briefly articulate to me by what right and rationale they have to make me less safe in this community.
I'd be glad to do that. First off, there's an issue on individual rights. In our state constitution, Article Two states, "You have a right for happiness." One of those rights is to own and protect your property. Article Three says, "You don't lose those rights unless there's a, you pose a danger to the community," my words. My house, your house, individual houses present no danger to the community.
That doesn't answer my question.
Well, just a minute, just a minute. Under the state law, as it was pointed out, when they passed the building code, they did not mandate that you have to enforce the building code. They left that to the towns specifically, and they go further to say, "There is no intent in the state to undermine or to dilute the authority of the towns to do that." As well as, Betsy pointed out, the paragraph in there that says, "If you don't have an inspection process, a legal one, then one or two family dwellings are not required to have state oversight," i.e. the contractor does not have to get anything from the state. It's not required. That's a level of confidence in the folks that are doing the work. The ordinance, the inspector, the inspection process is part of the state law and is part of our zoning ordinance, are not held liable for anything they miss. The homeowner is, in our ordinance, it says that the owner is liable. A good example of what happened is down in Ware. In 2006, a family wanted to make a bakery. They had to put in a new septic system. They did. The whole thing was inspected by the state, the town, the state, and it was approved for operation. In two years, it started failing. They wound up, the state says, first thing you got to do is start pumping more often and so forth. They took them installing the court, for whatever reason, they lost it. The state didn't interfere at all in the court proceedings, but as soon as they lost it, the state says, "You need to get a totally new septic system." They accepted no responsibility for all of the inspections and all of the approvals that they done. So we wind up with, our ordinance says, "The inspector is not liable, but the homeowner is." So the homeowner has the responsibility, but not the authority on how to do that. If you look at another comparable system, automobiles probably are the most dangerous thing on the road that we own. You can open a garage with no inspection, no nothing, as a mechanic. Same guy can do your inspection, annual inspection, and alls it takes is a little test, there's no follow-up. So the individual, the individual has a right to his own happiness. To think that the town is going to say, "I am going to give up, take that right away because I'm going to provide your security, your inspection, your safety, but I'm not going to be held liable," doesn't wash. So the last, wait a minute, I'm not done.
Well, you're going to get done at some point, I hope. I asked her, "Read the question."
I asked, "How, what right do you, by what rationale you have me to make me less safe?" And by your rationale, we should get rid of speed limits and...
We're not, we're not, we're not making you less safe. You have every right to make yourself a safer spot.
You can hire inspectors yourself.
Number two, you talked about speed limits. Our speed limits promote poor drive, and there is data to support that. But I won't go into that, but the point is that laws enforcement does not always make things better. Okay? Getting into this whole process, I mean, what I would love for anyone with the opinions that are being voiced here is data. And I looked for data. I contacted the state, I contacted the fire marshal. Here's my data, right here. I don't need any other data than this.
But that's not, that's not valid data.
And neither is your speed limit speculation. And neither are half the things that George talked about. Septic systems are approved by the state. You folks are obfuscating and working around the issue. This town has spoken a number of times about both its intent and with clarity about what it wants, and every time, you all don't get what you want, you bring it back under a new set of a couple of words here and there. I'm not done yet. Please, I don't get riled very easily. I would just like you to follow the intent of the voters. We go through this every year. We've sat here for an hour and a half, people are confused. Can you imagine what they're going to be like at town meeting? They're going to be even more confused, because this comes up every year, because people don't like the result... Because this comes up every year because people don't like the results of what happened. And what we didn't, in terms of the results of what happened, what we didn't like is that we were left with a process that we didn't feel gave us sufficient authority to do what the town clearly wanted to have done. What we're trying to do tonight is to provide the town the opportunity.
I think Peter's speaking to the amendment at this point.
These will be the amendments, okay? There's a reason why there were building codes. There are many, many reasons, but some good ones, they had to save lives. Back in 1980, my family and I were burnt out of the trap lodge in Vermont. There are numbers of things that were done wrong. People died there, okay? That year, there were 18 or 20 people burnt to death in Vermont because woodstoves were built too close to walls. Houses burned down in the very cold winter. That can happen, so there's a reason for codes. Whether we like the process or not, you know, we've been using it for the last eight to 10 years, it worked fairly well. Until one person decided to not follow the law. That one person has brought us to this. Now, last year, 160, 170 people died. We want it. Is this gonna happen again next year? And the year after, and the year after? You know, if you put this through, this amendment goes through. Do you know how many inspections you're going to do a year in Jackson? How many two families are gonna be inspected next year? One? How many commercial buildings? One? So what you're gonna have is a building inspector, you've got this three-page outline, and he's gonna inspect two or three houses in a year. Because you've blocked, by one amendment, you will block single-family home inspections, which is where most of the people live. And I'm not mad about it.
So you're concerned about job security?
Huh? No, I'm not, listen. You've got people here that are free staters going down a really dirty road because they're playing this game against democracy. And I don't like it. But that's okay. You'll lose it to vote, you'll lose.
Jada.
And I'm not mad. What?
This particular amendment has not been yet voted on by the planning board as to whether they recommend it. It will become law only if the majority of the townspeople vote for it.
I understand.
Therefore, your argument then needs to be taken to the people of the town and not just.
Of course, of course.
Or taken to the state.
The other thing is, how many people are here now that voted for this in September? The amendment did. One?
Two.
Two?
Three.
Three, okay, three. How many votes did it take? Five? Four. Took four votes? I noticed the people that will probably vote not to bring this weren't here that night. That's what I'm talking.
That's immaterial.
I know it's immaterial. But if you get the right people to vote on the right day, you get the law you want.
Let me say, if you feel that the town should not have the opportunity to vote whether to include or exclude single-family, that should be taken up with the state. The state is who provides that opportunity to the town. And if you feel that it's wrong for the town to have that opportunity to vote, that's a state issue.
I think Peter is absolutely right, though. I think what he said is absolutely right. You're gonna keep bringing this back until you get the vote you want, which I think is very undemocratic. I'm sorry, it's undemocratic, it's sneaky, it's deplorable, and it's unforgivable, as far as I'm concerned, on one individual.
I believe it's very clear that what we want is an enforcement process that stands the test of law. That's what we're trying to do.
Well, in reference to what George was talking about, you know, I feel like I should be able to do what I want with my own property, too. But I guess years ago, people lived in their homes for generations. And if they chose not to have a house that was built to code or saved, that's fine. But nowadays, people don't live in their homes for, what, 20, 30 years now, lots of lots of cases, if that. And not only that, that the plumber and the electrician, they go into that house and do the work, they are responsible for years to come for that work. And if it's not done to code, they are responsible to pay to have it fixed, or fix it themselves.
You're absolutely right. Don't disagree with that. But, okay, sorry.
I'd like to recommend that the planning board vote against recommending this as amendment. Why, I have a single biggest concern, it's along the lines of what Peter's talking about. Yeah, I have a right to do what I want in my home, it's my castle. I have my kids, I got grandkids staying there. I've got other people in that house. I don't have the right to put them in jeopardy because I didn't build them to code. It's just, it's not fair to them. To my family, sure. There isn't anybody that works on their own that can afford it. They simply, there's just too much in the code. Yeah, I knew it in 1990. I don't give a fuck with it. The risks are just too great. And there are risks that I, as a homeowner, am gonna foist off on my kids and grandkids. And I think that's unacceptable. So I think you should vote against recommending this entirely in favor of inspecting single-family homes.
Edith Wilena. I have bought and sold a dozen properties. And I have been in single-family rental properties, commercial properties. And in 2012, I have gone through the permitting process for a renovation here in Jackson. It was a wonderful experience dealing with Andy, dealing with a licensed electrician, a licensed plumber. And there were some things I wanted to do as a GC that they wouldn't let me do. But it all worked out wonderfully. But I must say, I think it's a little short-sighted to exempt single and two families because it may be your castle today, but I think if you drive up some of these side roads, you will see some homes that are former camps, whatever you wanna call them. And I've been in some of them and coming from, it's not really the big city, like we wanna say, that happens in New Hampshire. But in the southern part of the state where there are inspections for anything that is rented out, there is a liability there. And there are a lot of places in Jackson that are rented out seasonally that there's extension cords all over. And there's a lot of things that are below code that I think we are short-sighted by saying a single or a two-family should be exempt.
Just a point of correction, we're not talking about two-family, only single-family. But I'm sure that changes the point.
But I would say, single families are still rented out in the town of Jackson, especially as seasonal lenses.
It becomes, we're talking about owner-occupied home, not a rental home, because that becomes commercial then.
A single-family rental home is not commercial.
We've traveled, seen the ads.
Jerry?
By Phil's logic, all the homes in Conway, Bartlett, most of the homes in New Hampshire, small towns like others, are not safe by that logic. And they're not. But that's absurd to say that we shouldn't be allowed to live in those homes because the towns don't inspect. I mean, that's just absurd.
Nobody's saying that, people are saying in terms of new construction going forward, we should do a better job than we've done in the past. That's all this is about.
We have licensed plumbers on license for inspections now.
Yeah, I talked to Huntley about how some, well, some licensed plumbers work. Not what he knows correctly.
I think one of the things we're talking about is having licensed plumbers, licensed electricians doing the work in single-family homes. But a lot of the work done in single-family homes is done by the homeowner that isn't a licensed plumber, isn't a licensed electrician, and might not know much at all about doing electrical work, but still does. How safe is that if it's not inspected?
It probably isn't, but.
But it's, state law allows it.
State law does not allow work to be done not to code.
Correct, but the state law, the state allows us to do our own electrical and our own plumbing. You don't have to be qualified to do it.
It does need to be inspected. However, in Jackson, we just wouldn't have the facility to do it.
Right.
So, Joyce Allen. So if someone does their own plumbing and electricity and building, and it's supposed to be done according to the state building code, how is it going to be determined that it is done according to the state building code?
It's an owner's responsibility, it says in the law.
To?
Well, you can either, the homeowner can do it, he can hire an inspector, he can get an engineer or an architect, whatever he needs. It's his responsibility to take care of that.
But who's gonna enforce that?
He can hire his own inspector.
Why would he?
It's up to him.
I don't know, but how would we know, you understand my point?
We know that I know. So far, I think we've, I think two opinions that have been expressed sufficiently at this point is that if we don't inspect, we're running the risk of having unsafe construction. We shouldn't inspect because it's an owner's right and they can or will likely do things in the correct way. Those are the two opinions. As I said, I believe both of those opinions have been sufficiently expressed at this point. Are there any other comments or opinions beyond that?
There are obviously two sides to the issue. And your job is, is to, maybe to put out what Peter Malia gave you on amendment. You can, I presume, present that to the town for vote and not recommend it.
Yes.
Is that my correct on that? So you covered your base as to your own vote here. It would be nice, I think, or somebody should ask when it comes up, you know, how many people voted for it, was it three to one or?
That's always listed on.
Okay. Then what is all the discussion? There are two sides, obviously, two strong sides to this issue. Let the townspeople vote on it.
Any other comments?
Just like to say that for those that take the purist approach that how dare we take safety away from our homes. Personally, on this issue, I mean, single-family inspections, I believe that the town can develop a process that would work and be fair for single-family inspections as well. If we have the smart process, and that's gonna take some time and figuring out how to develop. But if we believe that by passing any of these things, that we're ensuring that our homes are going to be safe from now to the future, we're really kidding ourselves. That's not what this does. Does it mean that we're gonna have more safety? It absolutely does. But does it mean that we're going to protect ourselves from everything moving forward? It doesn't. I understand, people should recognize that.
Any other comments?
If somebody comes in with a, for a permit for a single-family house, it has to go to the building inspector or whoever else, he's gonna review the plans.
Under what scenario?
Well.
Presently?
Presently. If I'm building a, or we have a job building a single-family home, it has to be permitted.
Currently, it does.
Yeah.
Under the ordinance that we discussed at the previous public hearing, it would be. Under the new, under this amendment, if the amendment should pass, that construction would not need to be permitted for building code compliance. It would still need to be permitted for zoning ordinance compliance.
Okay, for zoning.
Correct.
Which is why it's always been.
Yeah. You know, it's, it's a funny thing, really. I mean, I understand what George is saying. If it has, still has to be permitted, the only thing you're looking at is a zoning setback and height requirement and things like that. But I think it simply could be included in there that basic life safety issues have to be addressed as well.
It's already there. The state already says it's already there. You have to comply with it. It's whether there's an inspection or not. That's the question. It's not the.
Yeah, I think the.
The code is there.
I agree. I think the problem is gonna be when it's voted on that the single-family homes are just completely out of the building code process or anything. And, you know, I don't want it to be said like that.
No, it says quite clearly exempted from the permitting process.
I really contest what Peter Malia says, and I have some points in the RSA, 675 to 3, that seems to me to indicate that we do not bring it forward. It says, "Any proposed zoning ordinance is submitted by a planning board, or any amendment to an existing zoning ordinance is proposed by a planning board." And they're talking not just about zoning ordinances in general, they're talking about zoning ordinances to start district orders, building code, et cetera. So this paragraph refers to all of those, I believe. At any rate, "As proposed by a planning board, for the selectmen or village district commission shall be submitted to the voters in the man prescribed in this section." And then it goes on to say, "After the public hearing, the planning board shall by vote determine the final form of the ordinance, amendment, or amendments to be presented to the town or village district, which ordinance or amendment may include editorial revisions and textual modifications resulting from the proceedings of that hearing." So that seems to me to very clearly specify that we have the right to reexamine this issue and to not put that amendment forward, even in a case that we disagree with.
Betsy, that's not what, you just read it, that's not what it's, your interpretation of it is incorrect. It says you shall put it forward.
I think what it says, I think we can make amendments. We could, I suppose, conceivably amend this to exclude only single-family houses of less than 1,000 square feet. And that presumably is legitimate, we just can't, what? That would then, I understand, fall under the less stringent application of the state law.
I think, you know, whether we agree or disagree with the exemption, I think it should be put to a vote on the ballot and let the people decide, not us saying here.
Well, I think that's, you know, see, that's where you and I differ.
Yeah.
I believe it's our job to put forth what we think is good public policy. When we've closed the hearing, I'm gonna ask if John and Dick would be willing to offer a reconsideration of your motions. I hope they consider it, because I think what I heard tonight largely supports keeping single-family housing under the building code enforcement.
We also heard that it ought to go on the ballot.
I don't, sure I heard that.
I did.
I did.
All right, I'm gonna close the public hearing. I'd ask Dick and John if they'd be willing to put it to a vote again.
I think the idea is to offer it. I don't see that muzzling the dialogue is productive. And I think if you don't put it on, you're muzzling the dialogue. When I voted for it, I didn't vote to approve it. I voted to deal with it.
I appreciate your view, I.
I agree with that statement.
Yeah, I understand, and I guess I'm of the opinion that we already dealt with it last year. But enough said. I tried.
So one question. In the RSA, it says, the wording, it will be to see if the town will vote to amend whatever as proposed by the planning board. So in my view, that wording would be really confused by the fact that then we would later say the planning board does not recommend it. So I don't see how we can say we're proposing that.
No, personally, I, that is not inconsistent with me that we would propose the amendment such that the town can vote on it whether or not we recommend that the town vote to pass it. Okay, Byron for the comment. I am moved that we recommend the amendment to exclude single-family residential construction.
Second.
On favor? On opposed?
Was that three to three?
Four to three.
I was saying four last week. Same four last week.
And the same three. We're just short one.
Okay. So that ends the public hearing on that second article. We have a petition to carry on. The latest date we can have, it's a public hearing on the Fourth of February. I propose that we hold a regular February planning board meeting at that meeting whenever we decide to vote for it. We don't have another meeting. One other thing we will be doing at that meeting, we involve a subdivision of the county. It'll be a...
That's going to be a public hearing and our meeting.
It's a public hearing on the petition. The petition is to rezone... Do you happen to have a copy of the petition?
The petition was to rezone Route 16 north of roughly the town country sign to rural residential from its present zoning as village.
Did you propose to...
I'm proposing the Fourth, which is the last date that we can do it. So we can do it prior to the Fourth, but not after the Fourth. Yeah, at some point, there's not anything, there's nothing we can do other than here, we can't amend the petition, we can't put it forward. All we can do is vote to recommend or not recommend it.
So you're suggesting Monday, the Fourth?
Yes. Does that conflict with anything at all?
No.
How's the date? Five P M?
On the second.
The second Monday?
No, this is the first Monday.
First Monday.
The Fourth is the first Monday.
At the Fourth, it could not be any, this is a math question, since there's seven days in a week, the Fourth of the month, it can't be, it has to be in the first week.
Right. Conspiracy.
Sorry, it's late. Story problems, you know.
And also, that's just, the summary of the petition is pretty strange. So the Fourth is...
Seven.
Seven, yes, seven.
Yeah, seven.
With the motion to adjourn.
So move.
Oh, I talk about the budget.
Oh, yes.
Well, my question of the budget is, to what extent does the planning board wish to propose or support or whatever certain elements in the master plan? We've discussed a little bit about it, and I went to North Country Council to figure out what they would charge if they were to do our master plan. And that price has gone up hugely in the last couple of years. They would charge approximately $15,000. Now, they say you can spread that out over a two or three-year period, but we may not want to do that.
And that does not include building, correct?
That does not include the build-out, right. So there's also been some people advocating for doing a build-out study. That's $10,000 approximately. And then to survey all the people in town would be reasonably inexpensive, given all the rest of it. That would probably be somewhere around $500 for duplicating the material and getting it out with the town tax bills. But I want to be sure that as we're proposing this to the selectmen to include in the budget, the planning board is supporting whatever the ideas are. So I'd love us to draw a vote or something on that.
If I had to choose between putting money towards help from the North Country Council and putting money towards the build-out, personally, I think I would choose the build-out.
So would I. I think that, that's the, I mean, that's really, that and the survey are really the scientific basis behind everything, anything we do.
And I think since we've done our master plan ourselves several times now, that I think we are probably better equipped to do it than somebody from out of town, even though they may be a professional...
Especially because there are many, many towns' master plans out there and we can, you know...
Well, I think we can even use our own master plan.
Yeah, we have a great forum.
And just step through it, you know, make changes, update it.
You don't have to reinvent it.
Right.
Yeah. Okay.
Can I answer your question?
Yeah, absolutely. I'm glad to get this sort of consensus.
So it's $10,000 to $15,000 as a recommendation? I mean...
Yeah, I'm talking about just for the master plan, and if we decide to put in the idea of a build-out.
No, no, I think we are suggesting we do want a build-out. So that's $10,000. Let's say $10,000 to $12,000, and then another $1,000 for manual costs and stuff. So you're up to almost $15,000.
I see what you're saying. Okay, but this is basically the master plan, so the planning board has another element of it. They're going to, you know, stuff's going to be proposed. So all I want to do is get the master plan taken...
What was our budget for this year, Ella?
$6,900. You use less than $1,000. You have to include all the fees from some...
Not all, if you understand.
You spend one way or another, regardless of where it comes from.
So it sounds like yes to $10,000 to $15,000 for the build-out and the incidental cost, but no to an additional $15,000 for assistance from the North Country Council.
And I think it can be all billed master plan, because the build-out really is an element of the master plan, is what I would say.
Yes.
Jerry?
We've got $6,900 in your budget currently to propose. Tonight, what we heard for discussion was that we'd be putting this as a separate warrant article on the warrant. Is that what the planning board wishes, or do we want to have it in your ordinary budget line item?
The $6,900 or the $10,000?
The $6,900 is already in the proposal, in the proposed budget. So what, as far as the master plan is concerned, do you want that to be a separate warrant article, or do you want that to be in just the general budget?
If I understood the RSA correctly, the town has to specifically vote on the expenditures that are in the master plan, that are included in the master plan.
Well, if you're, but if you're doing the build-out, that's not necessarily part of that, but that's why...
We could call the build-out as something to be used for, but I would think it would be better to...
And however that we want in that warrant article is what specifically, because we can't decide that for it. We can, but I don't know if that's a smart idea.
$14,333.
Wait up, hold up.
Probably $12,000.
I'm going to say $40,000.
Survey and, let's say, you know, one of the things with the build-out is then, as we work on the plan, we might want to make changes to things in the zoning ordinance. And we ask them to, okay, rerun the scenario with these changes, what happens?
Yeah, I think it would be smart to probably put it in at the minimum $14,000 or $15,000.
What did you say, Frank?
Well...
Did you say 20?
No, I said, I said another $2,000 to $3,000 on top of 10. I mean, I'm not sure I'm all the way to 15, but, yeah.
Would we spend that all this year?
Not necessarily. We might not. We might not be...
Can we carry it over?
No.
Use it or lose it. So maybe we don't ask for quite as much.
Yeah, you'd spread it over two years.
I think it'll take that long to put her, but we cert...
Well, it's more that though you're doing, you were engaging somebody to do your service, that service will only take a couple of months. And I imagine they would expect to be built when they could run into that service.
The majority of it, it's not that we could say 15, we'll do seven this year and seven the next year. Most of the 15 goes to that one item, the build-out.
15 this year is not going to impact the tax rate at all. What?
What was that? I'm sorry.
$15,000 is not going to do impact the tax rate at all. So I don't want to be too concerned about spreading it out one year to the next. If you don't spend it, then it doesn't. Like, if you only spend $8,000, $9,000 this year, then you just reappropriate what you need for next year. And that doesn't impact, the extra six doesn't impact the tax rate at all, because we just don't spend it. The other question I have for you is, who do you want to write that for? A question, do you want me to write it, or does someone in the panel write it?
You can write it. You want to write it instead of me? You know the wording that should be probably better than I.
Yes.
So it's 15, acceptable, everybody?
It shouldn't be better than that.
Cover some of our coffee. Okay.
Thank you.
So on that motion to adjourn.
I think you should let John... I'd like to point out that both John and Jerry have been here since 4:30. So is George, though.
So is he.
So is he.
And Ella's been here all day.
And Ella, yeah. Thank you, everybody.
Dick, anytime you come, bring this up to you.
Home away from home. Home away from home.